Anybody else got any? All right, number seven, approve the September 8th, 2020 meeting. Please a motion. Motion by William Maston, second by Jarmen Hicks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, number executive action. Number one on executive action is to elect the 2020, 2021 board chairman.
And I'm that Jarmen Hicks.
Motion by Mike Gilpatrick for Jarmen Hicks.
I'll second it.
Second by Larry Looper. Any more? All in favor for Jarmen Hicks? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Jarmen.
Thank you.
I'll do one more here and you can take over. Number two, elect 2020, 21 board vice chairman.
Well, that defaults to Mr. Gilpatrick.
Mike Gilpatrick.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Hayes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike. Jarmen Hicks, congratulations. Take over from right here and I'll swap seats with you.
No, you can sit right there. Next, please the 2021 KLN representative. Last few years at the NIN, but that's always up for negotiation, so.
Well, I think you should go to the one thing, Jeff.
Is that a nomination?
Um, yes. I nominate, yes. I nominate Mr. Stonecifer.
All right, we have a nomination for the legislative representative, being Mr. Mr. Stonecifer. We have a second.
I second that.
Second by Mr. Dotson. All in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four has been deleted off the agenda. Number five, we're approving the following bids for tricamipropene. It's almost eighty-nine cents a gallon for a total of thirty-three thousand gallons. Total bid price of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Number six would be, can we do all these together? If anybody opposed that?
I agree with you on that.
All right. Uh, number six would be a bid from N and L for a toner, which would be for coffee machines. Fire extinguisher bid from fire extinguisher sales. Number eight is approved school audit bid, seven thousand dollars from Cameron Fager. It's back on CPA in these last years, if I correct my. Uh, number nine, approved pest bait control, ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars from universal termite and pest. Number ten on this is approved bid for Shad Tire Company for, uh, let's see, these are twenty-two and a half inch radial tires, two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents each, and a recapping of a hundred and fifteen dollars each. Number eleven is bid from Advanced Auto Parts with death fluid for the buses. And number twelve is approving a bid from NAPA for antifreeze, oil, oil filters, batteries, and fuel filters. So if we could get a motion to approve the executive action items.
I move that we approve it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Stonecifer. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by William Maston. All in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are all these the lowest bids?
These are all the lowest bids. Several of them, it was the only bid to come here and say.
No, no, any other discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I said, Jarmen, so we've not done a roll call standard?
Uh, well, I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go back and roll call.
Yes, let's do that. You're great.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're right, you're right. The secretary can conduct that vote.
Okay. Dot Spout?
Yes.
Which Stonecifer?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Larry Looper? Larry Looper?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarmen Hicks?
Yes.
Diane Tapper?
Yes.
William Maston?
Yes.
Rick Fox?
Yes.
Juan Teck?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, gentle. Uh, consent agenda items. Approve the lead of options for Ken Dillon for nine, two, twenty-two, five, twenty-six, twenty-one. Approve a 2020, 2021 IDA partnership for systemic change, A through twelve. And third, we have discussed bond options for new sports facility in Livingston Academy.
Can we, uh, can we approve one and two first, then I'll go into the third one?
So, uh, first, the board members, can we get an explanation of what the idea partnership is? It's.
Two individuals, Miss Milton, she's.
I have a question, and that's something I may ask you. Is that your application?
That's not.
I just additional, additional money that came in.
Any other questions? So if we could approve items one and two on the consent agenda, we have a motion for that. Motion by William Maston, we have a second.
I have a question before we do that.
Do you have a question?
Uh, I know for a fact that Richmond needs six classrooms. I know Hillham needs some classrooms. And I know Livingston Academy needs some classrooms. And if we spend this money for this, are we gonna be able to build classrooms for the kids?
Hold on just one second. Uh, Mr. Lo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're good. We're about to take that one up just next. So for one and two, we have a motion by William Maston, and a second by Mike Hayes. All in favor of items one and two, indicate and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now with number three, which is discuss this bond option for sports facility in Livingston Academy.
Uh, let me have some up here in office.
Mike is probably taking more of a hike out there.
Well, that's gonna be a problem, and I mean, in a short period of time.
You make it, have that copy?
I don't know.
All right, so I'm gonna go through this here, and if there's any questions, stop. I know Larry had asked a good question. I know we had talked about the football stadium for a long time now.
Wayne, I might need your help here.
Okay.
So over the last two to three weeks, I've met several times with Connie, the county finance director, budget director, and Mr. Ben Banner on the options about the football field. So during the presentations that we went, and we discussed as a board, we went out to the community and discussed those options as well. It sounded like that if we could do the eight point nine million dollar option, which is the new field behind the softball field, get everything done, have the track, have everything, do it all in one total and get it done, that seemed like the best option if it could be affordable. So, meeting with Connie, I'm sorry, here. So after a meeting with Connie, um, several times, we got on the phone with Ashley, the bond representative, and based on their current situation, uh, we can get a bond for eight point nine million dollars to do the football field, the new facility, and everything. Now, what that looks like is.
This thing is a little slow when you start it up.
So while it's loaded there, obviously, page two here, I just put the options. Uh, so exhibit number three on the second page, that's the one by doing the current football field now, which is the seven point nine million dollar option. And the third page, most of y'all have the front and back copies, I try and say, paper. The third page, which is exhibit two, is the, uh, the option for the eight point nine million. We'll get there after a while. Uh, so what I'm gonna be talking about tonight is the exhibit two, which is the eight point nine million dollar option. So the next page you'll see here is, uh, this page where it's got the softball field. If you, they're told the front and back, if you don't see, there's front and back copies. You see it now, Dr. Winnie? So what I did is I took a Google snapshot of the softball and baseball fields, and I just incorporated what the new field would look like, and that's just a example of what it would look like. Hopefully this will come up here. Hopefully not, we'll go here.
If you go up to the top of it from the beginning.
Yeah, it's like, oh, I'm with you now. So that's what it would look like if we went the eight, with the eight point nine million dollar option behind the softball field. What happened? There we go. All right, so, um, obviously, you've heard my speech before many times, and Matt, you've probably heard it too. You know, this new field up there behind the softball field would be multipurpose. It would be for, um, football, soccer, track and field, band, uh, everybody would get use out of the field up there, uh, provides new facilities, uh, while the current facility would still be accessible, so that's a benefit. We can still use the current facility while we're building the new facility, uh, up top. The current facility bleachers, if we do go this route and go into contract and build a new one, first thing we're, you know, once we get done utilizing that, those bleachers will go away. That's the biggest safety issue that we got going on right now, is with those bleachers out there. The current field that we have, we can continue to use for football practice, the outlaws, the middle school can still use that facility out there. No change to what we've talked about, um, for the last several, several months about this. Uh, then also, we would put in contingencies, I think we have talked about, uh, put the contingency plan in for turf. Uh, we would go ahead and do all the work up front for the turf, that way eventually down the road, if we wanted to add it, we could add it. And also, it was brought up about the wrestling team, we could put that into contingency also, if we saved enough money, we could add on to the home side locker room for a facility big enough for the wrestling team to use as well. That would be a multipurpose facility up there. Keep going here. So financially, so currently, right now, on our current payments, we're paying nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars on bond twenty twenty-five. So out of that nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, well, let me go back, nine twenty on bond twenty twenty-five, which will be paid off in five years. The ESSI, that's the energy saving initiative that we did with Johnson Control, we're paying two hundred and eighty thousand on that. The bond, we're paying almost a million, we've got five years left. The Johnson Control, we got ten years left on that bond. So the total payments we're paying right now is about one point two million dollars a year. Out of that, six hundred and seventy comes out of will tax. These are rough numbers, these aren't exact. But six hundred and seventy is coming from will tax, and about five thirty's coming from our true overall purpose budget each year. Our total fund balance adds up August of this year is right at nine million dollars. So the proposed plan, if we go with this, uh, what we'll do is we'll have our current bond, no change over there, and bond twenty twenty-five, we'll still be making nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, a year payments on that one. The energy saving will still be the two eighty. Then the twelve-year bond, so we looked at two different options. There's a twenty-year bond and a twelve-year bond. The twenty-year bond, obviously, we, it would bring our payments down lower than what I'm about to tell you, but it spreads it out so far that your capacity to borrow in the future, if you have needs like Larry had talked about earlier, uh, is diminished down to hardly nothing. So the best way to look at this is a twelve-year bond, our payments are gonna be seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So what the plan would be is for the first five years, we would use our fund balance and make that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar a year payment. So after five years is over with, this nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment goes away. So the only thing we'll have is seven hundred and eighty and the two eighty, which is about two hundred thousand dollars cheaper than what we're paying today. So the only caveat is this seven eighty, we're gonna have to use fund balance for five years to make that payment until bond twenty twenty-five goes away. And I did a little estimate here, based on our fund balance where we are now, if we pull that money out each year, after five years, we'd be down to five million dollars if we use that to make that payment. Which brings me to my next slide. Over the past several years, we've been able to put money back in fund balance every year. So you can go back and look from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty. So we've put two hundred and sixteen thousand, almost a million, uh, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred thousand every year. This year here, sixteen and seventeen, we're negative one oh five, but that's the year that we had a one point one million dollar surplus in savings, that we gave five hundred dollar bonuses to professionals, two hundred and fifty to, uh, non-professionals. We did three units on top of the Livingston Academy, um, high school, with that extra money, plus we bought curriculum, if I'm not mistaken. So that year later, if you back all that out and say we didn't do that, which I'm glad we did, um, but we've been averaging saving seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year anyway. So if we continue that trend for the next five years, we're gonna be able to save enough to make that payment of seven hundred and eighty anyway, in hopes that after five years, our fund balance is still gonna be nine million. Does that make sense? So we talked about the twelve-year bond, um, so I got a quick lesson when we talked to the bond expert over there. You know, we'll utilize our fund balance to make our payments each of the five years that I talked about. One positive that, um, they, they look at is when they do a bond and they give you a bond rating in the store about your availability to borrow, is how much cash do you have, how much of fund balance do you have? So the twelve-year bond, um, helps us out because, um, it's a shorter amount of time, uh, plus we're not pulling four million dollars out at one time and doing a bond for five million. If we did that, that kind of straps our capacity, because now we have five million in fund balance versus nine million in fund balance. Uh, so it gives us the ability to continue to hold a good bond rating over the next few years, uh, while we're doing this, um. Then it minimizes the years of the total bond, so now we're at twelve years paying this off versus here, we're in about panic for the next twenty years. Uh, it allows us the flexibility if we want to. Uh, I did the math on it, after five more years, when bond twenty twenty-five is paid off, our energy saving program will only be down to one point eight. So if we as a board elected, let's go ahead and pay that off too, we can pay that off if we wanted to. But I just, that's some options that's out there. You know, if we want to start putting some money back in, you know, for the HVAC units, budget that every year, put it in capital outlay money, uh, you know, that's something we probably need to start looking at also. Uh, so basically, after five years, the bond twenty twenty-five will be paid off. Uh, we possibly could pay the energy saving off if we wanted to, that's up to everybody, leaving our total payment of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So after five years, bond twenty twenty-five goes away. If we elected to pay off the, uh, ESSI, then we'd have one payment of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for seven years. Then, uh, going with the twelve-year bond, it gives us the flexibility to borrow seven point eight million dollars after five years, and it gives us the flex- flexibility to borrow another thirteen point two million dollars after ten years. So I looked at it a couple of different ways, if things come up, there's needs in five years, you know, if we hold our fund balance where it is today, and we stayed at nine million dollars, and something come up, we needed to have additions, or needed to add on somewhere, we would have our fund balance plus the ability to borrow another seven point eight. Or if we waited for ten years, if we waited ten years down the road, we owe two years on the football field, is the only debt we owe, and we got the capacity to borrow twenty-one million dollars. So, couple of different options we can look at there and, um, and make this work. So I know, talked about growth, I know the biggest growth area in the county is Richmond, uh, so I got with Dr. Holman, looked at some numbers over the past few many years, and I just kind of did an analysis on this. Uh, going back from seventeen to eighteen, uh, they average about a two percent growth every year. So I did the math on it, said, hey, if we continue to grow up Richmond two percent every single year, now, that could happen three years from now, or it could happen ten years from now, just depends on the growth there. But if we had a growth of two percent every single year, in five years, we'll have a ten percent growth, in ten years, we'll have a twenty-two percent growth. So that twenty-two percent growth equates to additional one hundred and forty-three kids, which I've just done the rough average, and I know there's a lot of things go into factor in that, but at eight, eighteen kids per classroom, that would equate to seven point nine classrooms. So you're looking at eight classrooms that will be needed in Richmond in the next ten years. So going by the twelve-year bond that we elect to do now for the new facility over there, we could look at and say, hey, if the growth comes in faster than we anticipate, we've got the autonomy to borrow that additional seven point three million in five years to do some work. Or if we wanted to wait till ten, we've got the autonomy to borrow twenty-one million to do the work. I've just got a rough estimate on the addition, so if we did eight classrooms, you're looking at six million dollars for eight classrooms. That's rough numbers out there, so, you know, reality, if this number grows tremendously and it hits that in five years, we've got the autonomy to borrow the seven point three to cover this in five years. Or if we wait till ten years down the road, we still have that autonomy to cover it, plus do more needs. So when I go to the county, this is kind of a slide for me to talk to, you know, what are we asking for? We've self-funded ourselves for the past, I say self-funded, we've, our upgrades and our needs for, I know the past ten years, I mean, we asked for no help on the Livingston Academy roof, we've asked for no help from the county, I know in the last ten years that I've been part of this board. Uh, so we're not asking the county to foot the bill, uh, you know, we're gonna make it work based on pulling our money out of our fund balance, and we're gonna try to maximize our fund balance. It will be self-funded, it's not asking the county to go out and raise property taxes, it's not putting the extra strain on the taxpayers to, to foot the bill on this, this is pretty much self-funded. So basically, all we're asking the county to do is for them to give us the authority to get the twelve-year, eight point nine million dollar bond, and use our fund balance the first five years to offset the payment of that. So, any questions?
How about twenty?
Well, right now, um, so right now, we've approved the nine acres on that land there, but what we'll do is if we enter contract with, uh, Coke, then we'll just have to put the contingency in. And if we wanna go and do fourteen acres, then if it costs us some extra thirty thou- whatever number that is, then we'll just have to figure out ways to cut that in within that eight point nine million dollar budget. So, the first step here is you guys consider me going to the county and, uh, asking for the eight point nine million dollar bond. Self-funded ourselves for the next five years, uh, you know, based on how that's structured and laid out, then it's, uh, I'll have to go to the budget committee, I think that's what they said, the budget committee on October the thirteenth, then the front county commission on October the nineteenth, I believe, is that, so. Any questions?
You've done your homework.
Has the coaches, have you presented this to the coaches of these boards, and have they weighed in on if this meets their approval?
No.
Just any, any negative feedback from them?
We gave opportunity for them to come to the meetings during the.
County?
And now the coaches showed up, so, you know, we've talked about this for two years, and they've had ample amount of opportunity to come and visit, in my opinion, and, uh, and weigh in, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Under the new business title, we'll consider approving the bond, eight point nine million for twelve years for new sports facility, and then county commission approves. Anyone want to make that motion? Motion by Diane Satt.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Hayes. Since we're not spending much of this time, that does require a roll call vote. All in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have discussion of surplus sale. Who has information, let me go to that doctor.
Well, we just have, usually each year or every other year, we'll have surplus sale, and usually that's, uh, old buses that have, you know, lost their life expectancy for schools to have. I know we have some other vehicles, I think, that are gonna be in this sale. We do not sell the technology of them anymore. So it's, uh, it's primary buses, and any other vehicles that they have.
Will we, uh, will we have a grant, are we gonna apply for the grant again this time, if we buy a bus, we get a bus?
If they have that grant, we will, but right now, all their, the last that I saw is they're providing other vehicles, not buses.
If, if we know we're gonna do that, we'll have to keep two buses. That's part of the deal, that's not correct. We have to keep, we have to keep two buses, because then we have to bust them over and then punch a hole in them.
Yeah, you have to, you have to cut the chassis.
It's two.
You have to drill a hole in the.
In the block.
Block, and then they can inspect that, or you just take pictures of that, and then they have to inspect and do all that, so, but yes, that's what you have to do.
We probably just make to go ahead and hole two of them, and sell the rest.
I think they've already, they've already cut the chassis, and they've cut the hole with the block, so those, we already know which ones are the, that's already done.
I like Krista. Well, we do sell that bus, I, I believe that money needs to go back into the transportation funds, for them to use as a bus garage.
Any other discussion? We also have two letters of resignation, uh, Dr. Wingham. They may not be in this call.
They are, this is Josh Johnson, I've decided to resign from coaching the middle school baseball program. Thanks, please let me know if you received it. Dear Dr. Wingham and members of the Oakland County Board of Education, it has been my privilege to work for the Oakland County School System for the past forty-five years. I have met and worked with so many wonderful people, including administrators, school board members, principals, teachers, and school staff. To all of you, I say thank you. I've enjoyed these past forty-five years working with parents and children, especially the children. They have been a bright spot in my life. We have learned so much from each other. The decision to retire from a job I love has not been an easy one. However, I believe the time is right for me to retire. I am retiring effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty. I'm going to miss being a part of, uh, of the educational environment. Again, thank you for allowing me to be a part of the Oakland County School System for so many years, sincerely, Cheryl Satt.
Okay, we get a, uh, motion for the.
OCA presentation.
All right, we don't have a date yet for our surplus sale.
We can set that, if you all want to set that.
Uh, I will, I will, when, when would I think we say it?
One day we have done last time, Doc, if you desire to sell, is it on a Tuesday or Thursday?
I'm not sure.
Heather was there, too.
We had it like it.
We started at ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
It might be, and I just, I don't know, it's ten o'clock today.
Uh, well, I guess we'll need to set a date for that. What, does anybody know what we're impressed?
It's good for me anytime, I always go through the auction law.
Did you say Tuesday or Thursday?
Yeah, even on a day.
There's.
Or a Friday, I mean, it's kind of advertised.
After this week, you've got two more Thursdays in the night in September, and you've got three Tuesdays, and then you're into October.
We can do it on a Friday, I don't care, it'll actually be better for me on Friday. We got a few dollars. Given all, just, we need to check with Noah too, and then to make sure that's okay with them, so, but then, I, I talked to Noah a while back, he said it's about ready for us.
We can approve the sale, make set the date.
Yeah, just gotta, give a note in the papers.
That works for everybody, I mean, let's, uh, uh, before we recognize OCA, let's just, uh, let's per those letters of resignation, and, uh, that's our plus side. Uh, all in favor of that, please indicate and say aye. All in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we do have the O C A representative, Ms. Allen, here.
Out there. I just want to say that the teachers are really, really working hard, they've really, really stepped up. We've basically increased the school day, since we can't use the lunchroom for breakfast, and they have to be there early, and they don't have duty free lunch, so they really, really stepped up to the challenge. And I just wanted to recognize them and let y'all know that they're working probably harder than they ever have. And also wanted to say that the teachers really appreciate the steps that have been taken to help alleviate the stresses of the virtual, and look for solutions to the problems for that, so that's something we appreciate. Thank you.
Before we close out, there's a director's report and fundraiser report, provided in the paper for everyone. We've got new board members with us tonight. Dr. Winningham, you see that they get a copy of the this year's budget? Of course, I have a policy book, and a copy of the director's contract. Is there any other information, gentlemen, do you have a lot?
Yeah, I've got a couple, a copy of the last two years of the director's evaluation. And if we have a contract with the attorney that represents the board, if there's a contract in place, I'd like to have a copy of that as well. If not, I'll let you know what the terms are.
Okay, all right. Did you get those numbers, Dr. Williams?
I'm making.
Okay.
Let these two guys introduce themselves, tell what they do or what they have done, I think that'd be good.
Well, that's the only reason that I would.
My name is Mitchell Stonecifer, I've been a nurse for the past thirty-three years, I'm director of the cardiac cath lab, E P lab at the original medical center. And the reason I wanted to be on the board, having open agendas, the board laid on my heart to do this about three, four years ago. And my kids, getting through the Overton County School System, had great experience, great teachers, and so I just want to give back and some small way to my community.
I'm Wayne Tate. I've been retired for the last year and a half on a retired school, I drive over to county. I drove for Overton County somewhere around thirty years, about thirty-five altogether. And how many, I guess, retired farm?
For those information, those gentleman requested, we will, I guess our next, next month's meeting agenda, we'll have a spot on there to discuss those things. Any questions, gents have? I said that includes contract, the budget, our policy book, you should get a hardbound copy of every policy we have. We have those together, or it'll take a few days to get them.
They're two big binders.
So if you guys would just work that out with Dr. Winningham, do you smell them? And we'll go over that information. As far as the, I don't know if we have a continual running contract, Mr. Davis, but you.
I don't think so, written contract.
Okay.
Just, just, yes.
Sure. Real quick on our committees, I'm not a big, let me take this off, sorry, Doc, I'm not a big fan of committees. Our budget, we should get a monthly budget report, that way everyone has access to it. We all see it, any questions arise, we'll all go over it together. If throughout the year, there are bigger issues, stadium, that type of thing, we need one, we'll go one together with them. If not, we're, we're all right on that. As far as our building committee, before I get off on that, because, and the reason I say that is, the budget falls under W Director's code, it's he and his budget directors responsible to present that to us. So that's, that's the way I prefer to handle it, that's the way it should be handled. The building committee, I prefer to let Mike Hayes do the contact point for that through the chain, the co-architects and the county commission. And I thought if nobody has a problem, and I'd like to dissolve the building committee as well, other than just Mike Hayes being that contact. If anybody has a problem with that, we'll carry on, but so far, Mike's doing the legwork and been carrying the load, so I don't see it being an issue. Our policy committee that we have, we're going to dissolve that, Dr. Winningham, T S B A, they provide us with that information when laws change, policies need updated, so. It's kind of an honor just to have a committee to have a committee, so. As he presents those to us, anybody has any in-depth questions, we'll go over them all together. And if nobody else has anything for this meeting, I would for a motion to go ahead.
With regards to the policies, I know, so those recycle back up, and as suggested, it's when those need to be renewed. As far as a policy that you see that may need to have some correction or changes, as a board member, do we have the right to bring that, put it on the agenda, any?
That's correct, that's correct, any of those you have questions on, we can go over it in the work sessions, we can do it in a meeting. On a policy, I prefer the work session because that way we can send it to the T S B A, which has legal advice, and make sure those are compliant with laws. So, but yes, yes, sir.
So we are going to have a work session tonight?
Yes, that's true. So if there's no other questions, we'll entertain a motion to the chair.
I believe we chair.
Mitchell Stonecifer, William Mitchell, what do you say? All in favor? Any opposed? Now on the work session forty-nine. Anybody want to make a break, go ahead, that's our forty. We don't have anything in particular on this work session. Anybody has any questions, anything like you can say.
I've got four files. All right, the first thing is getting our, our agenda for a meeting. According to our board policy, we're supposed to have it in our hands or on a computer one week prior to meeting. And that's not been happening for the last year or two, I guess. And I'd like to have that on the Tuesday, one way or, some way or another, before the meeting.
Okay, we will try our best to make that, we will, we will try our best to be within just a day or, you know, maybe two is the most, do the best we can. Because unfortunately, one of these days, I'm going to go back to work for a living, so my schedule's more complicated. But I'll try my best to make sure we're all on the same page and do that.
Another thing is the awning still down at Richmond School, it's been down since last March, where they're loading the buses. And I think Hillhams got an awning too, is that not correct, if you don't know where?
Ah, there's one that's been hit by a bus, that is correct.
But Richmond's down on the ground, I'd like to see if we can get that taken for the store, that's where the kids load the evening, the stuff's still laying there, ain't been touched. Also, our intercom system's out at the school, we have no intercom system, Jennifer knows that, and it's pretty tough, got a while, you'll see a picture if they need one, or holler for a kid.
The.
The awning, I can address that, if they've not contacted anyone about that, I will.
I think they have, have they talked, has Donnie talked to you, has it?
He has, and I've turned that over to Bateman's.
So I've asked them to get somebody to come fix that out, so if not, then I'll talk to them tomorrow. On the intercom, we're working on the phone system that we're going to put in, we'll need the intercom system in all the schools. And so we talked to Twin Lakes today, we will have to get that out, obviously. But we'll get through that as quickly as we can.
And have you took the bids on, or let out the bids for the trucks yet?
They have talked to, I think, one of them in Cumberland County, the board leadership of Cumberland County, they're getting specs from them, kind of what they want, and we'll get that out. It's what they would normally have on a weekly.
And probably get a few escape cracks.
Yeah, if they can, yes, and that's the other thing they mentioned, and so that's, that's what we've been going through, is that, we'll just piggyback off that statement.
Ricky, but that intercom system, I think we set aside a hundred thousand dollars.
I think that's correct.
I think that's what we set aside, because Lightning ran in, I think, on three schools, intercom system. So hopefully the hundred thousand covered it fine. We'll do something, we'll make it work. Anybody else?
I've got a couple more, yeah. We've done, we haven't had a work session like that, all right. I want to thank the U C M C too, for the lights and the new parking lot, I think I've done. But I want somebody to explain to me about the basketball, about the practices on the COVID, and, I mean, one minute we're going to do something, same like next minute, we're not. So I'd like some explanation on that. Other schools, other counties that are playing and practicing, got games this week, doesn't have games this week. I don't think, can we not play till the twenty-eighth or something, or practice the twenty-eighth, what are we doing on middle school?
I believe the practice could start today, I'm not sure.
And I don't know the date on the games, that's been in the, that's been according to the rules, it's been in place for several years, but I don't remember the exact date.
The soccer and, soccer and volleyball, they're not wanting them to play till their season's over with, or what's the deal?
I said it again.
Like, I think soccer maybe and volleyball is not wanting to practice basketballs if their season's over because of COVID or something. I've heard something like that today.
I don't know anything about that.
Now, the only thing that's always been in the past, if you're playing one sport, then you'll finish that sport before you start the other sport. And I think that's something that the coaches have always collectively agreed with each other today.
So the rest of the team can practice anymore?
Yes.
Last few questions people asked me today.
Now, there aren't any guidelines yet from the T double S double A on winter sports, that I'm aware of, if they happen to come out.
But T double S double A, that's not sanctioned in middle school?
That's true.
Basketball?
That's true.
We're talking about this, do we have a plan on how we're going to limit the number of guns into the gyms for that?
Capacity right now, it's been, I guess, discussed by the T double S double A is half. Now, what that would be in each gym, I don't know. It would be half capacity is what we would expect.
And would that be posted at the gym?
And that's going to be different, that's going to be different in each gym.
You'll have to regulate your ticket sales, and before the event, not to wait for the.
That's correct.
Yeah, like high school football, right now, they'll, each player is allotted so many, that way they make sure their family can come, and after that allotment's over, if there's any left, they'll offer to somebody, you know, like students or something, but they have their allotment set out, makes out throughout the week.
Anybody else have any?
I, I have a concern about the surplus sale. I sort of see a conflict with a school board member doing that. Back when the Trump rhetoric report came out, I had a number of complaints that supposedly Mr. Dotson ended up with all the rocks off of the, of the buildings. So I see that as, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but I see that as leaving you open for a conflict of interest.
Actually, Rob Boykin and Adam Dotson bought the rocks at the auction. They went to check for it, I had nothing to do with it. Only thing I done was auctioneer, and it was an imitation bid, so I mean, I didn't pay for nothing, I didn't buy nothing.
Well, you know how the, you know how the.
But that's where gossip, I don't count.
As far as the surplus sale, Mr. Dotson doesn't do the auctioneer. We'll have to hire someone?
Someone else can do it.
It's volunteer, is what I do.
I can't, I can't do it.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, Ted Smith used to do it, and he got really good to do it, I get you, have to hard.
Well, I tell you what we'll do, let's, we'll look for a list of volunteers, we'll go from there, how about that?
I would think with Cheryl Satt, it's her forty-five years, that's a long time to be in the school system, and for us anyway, maybe we can invite her next month's meeting, and maybe do a presentation to her or something.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be great. So.
Right, I have a question, just in generalities, Dr. Winningham, what about the COVID situation with our schools?
We're actually better, I guess, this week, than we were a couple of weeks ago, those numbers have gotten a little bit better. I mean, it's still a serious issue for some doubt, but we're better today. We hope, you know, since we, you know, we go about here and there, I mean, that, that could change quickly.
So you get the numbers out every day?
So understanding, reading the news today, that the state is developing a dashboard, and.
If no one has anything else, I got one thing real quick on this.
I got one thing.
Sure.
So I'd just like to say, and I asked this question about two weeks ago, if we could update the website and reflect on the next board meetings are. This is the fifth board meeting we've had, and on what the Overton County School website, it says that June the eighteenth is the next board meeting. So we've had five meetings since then.
Try our best to get that addressed this week. The only other thing I have, and it may not even pertain to us yet, I talked to Ben Danner one day last week. They might be receiving some grant money for upgrades to voting locations. As everybody knows, there's a lot of our schools that they use voting, voting locations, so. It's possible that there might be some type of upgrades to our facilities that come through that. That's on down the pipeline, that's, that's nothing definite, but that is a possibility, so. If that comes into play, we'll get that information to everyone else. If nobody has anything else. We're done?